Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Wilson County Commissioners Court Order. It's nine o'clock AM. Before we begin, we will have our prayer by Pastor John Conrad, First who is in church.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, bless the leaders of our land, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to others around us. Send down upon those who hold office in this court the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their office to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, honor the United States of Texas, and the state under God, one and indivisible. Before we move to agenda item number three, for the record, we do have a quorum. Commissioner Martin and Commissioner King have excused that. Do we have any public comments?
It is, but it's for a certain item. Do you want to?
Which item is it?
Number nine.
Okay, so we'll reserve that public comment for agenda item number nine. We'll make a note of that. Agenda item number four, certificates of completion awards and bonds. I have a certificate of attendance for Raymond Avetta for a successful completion of a ninety-minute webinar training on maximizing VA benefits. Certificate of training for Genevieve Martinez, our county clerk, has completed her cybersecurity awareness training program for twenty twenty-five. Same certificate of training for Gail Ritchie, Crystal Pizalzo, Mary Spoon. We have one for Georgina Lita for security and privacy, successful completion of training. Enter those into the minutes. Extension number five, agenda of number five, extension activity reports. Do we have anybody from AgroLife here? Okay, Commissioner, that's for your view, and I'll let you look at that for the minutes. We'll move to agenda item number six. We have Michelle Keane, Development Director for CASC and the CAC, discuss and take action on approving CASC child abuse prevention awareness proclamation.
Hi, can we interview Judge?
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Christine Martinez with Children's Alliance of South Texas, represented by a lot of people in Blue on this side of the room. So we're joined by the Wilson County Carers and Associates CPS teams. They're very shy, they do a lot of their work out there. Casa, SJMC Balog, and Children's Alliance of South Texas, President of New York Sandy Dominguez, and Advocate Giann Polk, to April's Child Abuse Prevention Month.
You know it very well. Do you want to read the document?
It's long, I can read it, please.
No, I'll let you read it, and then we're going to have the shy ladies come up and take a picture.
It's a long one. Whereas an estimated five hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine children were victims of abuse and neglect in the U.S. in twenty twenty-two, the most recent year for which there is national debt. Whereas in federal fiscal year twenty twenty-one, three point nine million reports were made to Child Protective Services and CAC investigated two hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-three cases involving sexual abuse allegations in twenty-two. Whereas in twenty twenty-two, an estimated of nineteen hundred and ninety children died from abuse and neglect in the United States, a number consistently on the rise over the previous five years. Whereas in twenty twenty-three, children's advocacy centers around the country served three hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-four child victims of abuse, providing victim advocacy and support to these children and their families. Whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas in Texas, one in four girls and one in six boys will be sexually abused before their eighteenth birthday, ninety-eight percent of the perpetrators are someone the victim knows. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce form and make risk and promote social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas child abuse and neglect are serious problems affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions require input and action from everyone. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we encourage public awareness of child abuse and neglect through education, recommit county resources to the cause, and promote county involvement through local activities. And whereas the acknowledgement that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about children and abuse, and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for children and families.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number six. I will, soon as you vote on it. I've read the vote on it, and we'll go. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Aiken. Do we have any other discussion regarding this agenda item? I want to say that if we have any CPS case workers here or case workers, you know that that had to been the best, hardest job ever, had to be the best job of being here as Commissioner. And for all of you who don't know, there's thirty thousand children in either the care guidance or CPS on a day-to-day basis, thirty thousand in the state of Texas. So y'all do a great job. I've been with y'all, over with you, with you. I've seen your great work, and I've always been proud of you. All right, we have a motion, and the judge will be voting today, so we can complete the quorum. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against? All right, now therefore, I, Wilson County Judge Henry Elwoodton Jr., do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as child prevention, child abuse prevention month of Wilson County, Texas, and urge all citizens to recognize this month to dedicate themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Thank you, ladies. We now move to agenda item number seven. We have Denise Chabucco. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Right. Ms. Chabucco, Family Ministries, Florisville First Baptist Church, discuss, take action on request used at courthouse lawn for community Easter econ April nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, from nine o'clock to eleven o'clock AM.
That's it.
That's it.
We just want to know what's the Easter econ for the community. We have about twenty to thirty teens that will be helping, and probably about twenty to thirty adults will be picking it up afterwards.
Will you be putting any structures up, any tents?
No structures.
We're just kind of reminding them where to get our irrigation system and all.
No structures. The only thing going out there are little plastic eggs.
Got it, okay.
And candy covers.
I'll entertain the motion.
Quick question. There's no conflict on that date. You don't have anything else?
Not that I know of.
Not that I'm aware of.
I think we double-checked it, Rachel did.
Make the motion that we allow for the family ministries of Florisville First Baptist Church to conduct the Easter econ April nineteenth, and the hours would be from nine to eleven AM.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Do we have any other discussion on agenda item number seven? Here now, I call for a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number eight, move to the Wilson County Beautification Association. It's a discussion only. Announce the South Texas Environmental and Conservation Symposium to be held in force September fifth, twenty twenty-five at the Wilson County Expo Show Barn, hosted by Wilson County Beautification Association, WCBA-TX.org. Do you have a representative? Will you state your name?
Good morning. Judge Whitman, Sheriff Stewart, Fringe Trevino, Carolyn Durin, Genevieve Martinez, and his citizens. Good morning. My name is Elaine Mizurick Stevens, and I am a director with the Wilson County Beautification Association, and I'm here today with other members of our organization. The Wilson County Beautification Association is a five oh one C three nonprofit, and we are an affiliate member of Keep Texas Beautiful. Today, we're here to announce to you our upcoming event, the South Texas Environmental and Conservation Symposium, that will be held on a Friday, September five, this year, at the Wilson County Expo Show Barn. Our organization regularly engages with citizens on topics of litter abatement, water conservation, and many environmental issues. And through our speakers forum, and our awards program, and other programs, we continuously strive to raise awareness of beautification, environmental issues, and conservation concerns. Additionally, our publication, the South Texas Beautification and Environmental Directory, has provided us with contacts in many of these related fields. So we felt that it was a good time to bring together leaders, professionals, and advocates to share the most up-to-date environmental information for South Texas. And we are excited to host this symposium and to welcome these experts and students and guests to Wilson County for this event. So as county leaders, each of you who share many of the same environmental concerns and issues facing others all across South Texas, not just Wilson County, we are hoping that you will plan to attend and invite your colleagues in this region of Texas. Your presence and participation, of course, will support the ongoing need for continuous knowledge and protection of the world in which we all live. So today, I have, we have distributed to you a flyer for our event, with the information on the back about admission, vendors, and sponsors. It will be open to the public. We do have a special rate for students. It is a Friday, and many of the school districts are closed on Friday, so we especially invite them. We will not have craft tables at this event, just vendor information tables. And so on the flyer, and we do have more for some of you who are attending today, we do have speakers lined up from the Texas Water Resources Institute, Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi, Dark Sky Texas, which advocates for the protection of our dark skies through reducing light pollution, Evergreen Underground Water District, and GBEC. Our invitation list includes at least a hundred and fifty people right now, and more if you have any people that you would like for us to invite. We're happy to do that. And then we've also handed to you one of our previous directories, and you can see that, you can see the sponsors in there, which we distribute widely in South Texas. So that is our invitation to you. Do you have any questions?
I will make sure we're good on our calendar.
Yeah, I don't see the time on here.
Yes, it is from eight to five.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to agenda item number nine, but first, we do have a public comment that we'll address right now for that agenda item. We have Ms. Kimby. I always, I can't read your writing sometimes, because you're very.
I understand. I don't actually use my hand, but I do everything on the computer. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the court. I noticed when I printed out the agenda last Friday that item number nine appears to send all the hotel occupancy tax funds to Florisville. It's as though you don't exist in this county if you're outside of Florisville. Now, I know that a few agendas back, we, the court said that, told the county auditor's office to prepare application packets for people, for places that were wanting to get some of the hotel, hotel tax. But it's not been very long. I personally didn't see any advertisement. They were asking for applications. It just appears to me as though if you are in Florisville, you have an in, and if you're not, you don't. And so therefore, I suggest that there are places this ought to be going to in addition to places in Florisville, and thank you very much.
All right, we move to agenda item nine, A. Florisville Opry, Care of Wilson County Historical Society.
Yes, Judge. So I do want to remind the court that once, when you approved the application for the use of hotel occupancy tax funds, the application was posted on our website, as well as posted on our social media platforms for all entities, any entity within Wilson County to apply. The application also did get emailed to all six previous entities, and the application period is open through August thirty-first. So this is not, we are not distributing all the hot funds for this, for this application. Request, the way it is spelled out in the application, which is also posted, all of the rules and regulations regarding Chapter three fifty-one of the Tax Code are listed there as well, and it gives everyone within the county an opportunity to request funds until the funding runs out this, the school year, and we rebudget again. So with that being said, we did receive two applications, and so I have them as listed as two separate agenda items. The first application was received on three twenty-eight, twenty-five, and this comes from the Wilson County Historical Society in care of the Florisville Opry. I did provide you a copy of their application, their full application. On the side note, I will let you know that I did do a post-event report request from all of the entities that received funding last year. The Opry did comply with the use of the funds for last year, and they are requesting ten thousand dollars to, to be used for the Wilson County Historical Society's Florisville Opry headliners, MC, and advertising to bring visitors to our county and to the city for all twelve months of entertainment, and it's to good heads and bets, as Ms. Violet Hinkie is the one who submitted the application. We do have members of the Opry here. If you have any questions for them, I did go into a lengthy discussion with Ms. Hinkie regarding those who attend the Opry, and as a matter of fact, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hinkie, but the majority of the attendees of the Opry are actually come from out of town, and so they are utilizing the hotels when they're here. So that is their, you have that application. You should have it there with you if you have any questions, either for me or for members of the Opry who are here.
So let's address, because of the way this has gone so far, what's the total amount of hot funds that we have right now? What is budgeted for this year?
What's budgeted for this year is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe.
One fifty thousand.
One fifty or one fifty-five. I'll have to look at mine.
And is this request in line with previous requests from the Opry?
Yes. This is the same amount that we have provided funding for them for the last three years, and they're requesting the same amount.
What data do we use to determine their percentages?
It's not. It's based on, on their request. So previously, what we, what the court has done since twenty nineteen is distributed the funds based on those events that the county judge and myself and the court deemed brought in the most money into the county during those events. Yes, sir.
Who are the other entities? It's just not the Opry.
The previous, the previous entities that were awarded have been the Opry, the Florisville Peanut Festival Association, the Stockdale Chamber of Commerce in care of the Stockdale Watermelon Jubilee. We've also provided funding to the Laverne and Greater Chamber of Commerce, the Florisville Chamber of Commerce as well.
They have not submitted applications yet.
They have not. I did receive post-event, post-event reports from all of the entities, the Chamber of Commerce entities. I'm still reviewing those application, or those post-event reports, but I have not received applications yet from them.
Before we vote, or ask for the vote, anybody can before the Opry, one, seven, few words.
I'm not a public speaker, and this makes me very nervous. I'm sorry. But anyway, I want to thank all of you commissioners for the past funds that we had received from the county, and we, at that time, did not even ask for it, and we are almost selling out every month. And it is bringing people to participate, not only in the hotels, but go out to eat at different restaurants and get their groceries and go to the boutiques and, you know. It is putting Wilson County on the map, because I was thinking, I've been doing this since twenty eleven, and I have great help. My team is, excuse me. My team is wonderful, and I appreciate them all so much. And, oh, anyway, I just want to say thank you, and Wilson County News has been a great sponsor since day one in twenty eleven, and that reaches a lot of different subscribers to the paper. Anyway, do any of you girls have anything to say?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll entertain the motion on nine eight.
Make the motion that we use hot funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars to help support the efforts of Florisville Opry, and as backed by the Wilson County Historical Society.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Do we have any other discussion on nine eight?
Judge, I just wanted, just to clarify, and just for the record, on Chapter three fifty-one of the Tax Code, there are several approved uses of the funds. One of them is the promotion of the arts that directly promote tourism and hotel convention industry, and that is the, the area that they are applying for, which they do need that qualification or that requirement.
I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Ayes have it. Move to agenda item number nine, be the Florisville Peanut Festival under the same subject.
Yes, sir. This application was received on March the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, from Ms. Betty Frazier and Mr. Albert Sines. The purpose of this organization is to organize and conduct all aspects of the annual Florisville Peanut Festival, educating and providing leadership development to the Royal and Children's Courts, including community service commemorating the county's peanut farmers and farming history to promote Wilson County, the city of Florisville, its businesses, and the community. The Florisville Peanut Festival Association is requesting sixty thousand dollars, which is the same amount that was provided last year. The funds would be used to enable, to enable them to attract and retain top-quality live band performances for the main stage on Friday and Saturday nights, and associated expenses, including band contracts, cost of renting upscale stage sound, and lighting. And then they also provided, in your packet, they provided whole packet of, an addendum with all of their data to support how many people they are touching. And this one also falls in category D, promotion of the arts that directly enhance tourism and hotel and convention industry as well. And I do believe, yes, Mr. Albert Sines is here from the Florisville Peanut Festival Association, if you have any questions for them.
Ms. Frazier, anyone to address the court?
Thank you for having us here. My name is Albert Sines. I'm the president of the Florisville Peanut Festival Association. With me, I have Ms. Betty Frazier. She is the past president, so she organized the festival last year. I have the honor of doing it this year. But we want to thank you for your generosity and the county. But we want to thank you for your generosity and the kind we, we would not be able to do this festival without her support, without the support of the city and our many sponsors. As the application says, we use these funds to be able to attract top talent, to be able to enhance our festival. We've done a great job of trying to really get our businesses involved that are in downtown Florisville, and promote just people to go into their shops and to be able to attract those buyers and make sure that we can include all of our entire community. So, we're really excited for this first festival. We do have our entertainment lined up, contracts have been signed, so we're ready to start promoting it. We feel like we're really ahead of the game this year and going to be able to market it a lot sooner, so hopefully getting more visitors to the town this year. Very exciting.
When, when is it held? What month?
October. It's always the second full weekend of October. This, this year it's going to be October tenth and eleventh, Friday and Saturday.
Let me sure if I'll entertain a motion on ten, I'm sorry, nine B.
Make the motion that we award the Florisville Peanut Festival association sixty thousand dollar hotel occupancy tax fund.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion regarding this Agenda Item?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
This number is historical. It's something that we've done in the past. It's the same amount of funding. The only thing is, is that if we have any other new entities come in, um...
It is open for, the application will remain open until we utilize all of the funds, if, if we utilize them all by September thirtieth. And, and I really am liking this format that the Court has approved, because it gives you an opportunity to really look through the data that these entities are providing, and it opens it up countywide for it. I would highly recommend, especially those that we have funded in the past, to get on the ball and get their application submitted, because I, it would be as first come, first served basis, which is what was posted in, on our website, so that they know, hey, once the money runs out. But we certainly want to be able to open it up to multiple organizations that are going to fill our hotels in the county.
Quick, now, the seventy grand, so it's going to leave eighty. These other three entities requested that eighty in the past. Was it completely filled with the hundred and fifty thousand?
Last year it was, yes.
So, they do act, or they face their money going somewhere else that they traditionally?
Correct.
That's all I have, just.
Here are no other discussion. I'll call for the vote. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against, or she passes. We move to Agenda Item Number Ten. Ms. Rato, Harmonia Development Director, ten A, non-standard class variance, one, Timber Heights, one oh eight precinct three, Perkins, discuss and take action.
Yes, good morning. Mr. Rodney Perkins put in for variance for this property located in Timber Heights subdivision. The home was built twelve inches into the platid setback for the subdivision. Because at the time it was being built, there was a well that was, that is now, since been decommissioned. The utility providers for that area have released the easements, so it's, it's not affecting any of their setbacks or utility easements. This is pretty much just something that the bank is requiring for the lender in order to sell the properties.
And I believe the developer also signed off on it?
Yes, I have letters from the developer to sign off on it, and I guess also the utility companies that have given permission for use of the twelve inches of easement, or in the setback.
You sure you're precinct?
I, I, it's, I received the favor, the, the, the developer, the, the, the...
Heard that. Well, I'll entertain a motion on ten A one.
I'll make the motion that we accept the revised plan for Timber Heights, one oh eight precinct three, Perkins property.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Aiken. Any discussion on ten A one? If none, I'll call for the vote. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, ayes have it, motion passes. We are going to bypass ten B for the ten o'clock public hearing, and we'll return back at ten o'clock for that. We will move to ten C, subdivision Country Oaks, lot twenty-two, replac. I'm sorry.
That goes with the...
Does it really? You're right. Okay. We'll go with that. All right, we'll return back at ten o'clock. Agenda Item Number Eleven. We have Ms. Stewart, our county sheriff, discuss, take action, approve installation of water well on county property, County Road three ten adjacent to the collection facility.
The reason that's on the Agenda Day is that I've been in the process trying to upgrade and improve our range the last three or four years, slowly but surely making progress. In order to continue making that progress, it's apparent that I'm going to need some kind of water in order to irrigate and put utilities out there, restrooms, stuff like that, place for cleanup. In order to do that, it's a long ways to any water system supply, plus the count, plus the cost of gallon per gallon of water that I would use. It's probably more economical for me to make a drill and a water well on that property and place it somewhere in the vicinity of the range. Also make the property worth a good more in the future for the county if they ever decide to sell it, so. That's what I'm looking for as a water well.
You done any research on what the cost would be?
I've got one bid right now at twenty-four thousand. And that's complete term key. But after talking to Commissioner Perdola and some others, I may want to revamp the specs and look at it a little bit more closely before I start looking at that.
So, is there a amount you're asking the Court to set aside for you? You already have it in your...
I, I believe I have the money in my budget, or I can find the money in my budget. And based on the preliminary deal, I know it's going to be less than fifty thousand dollars, and I definitely wouldn't go over that with anybody. That'd be more money than I probably need to invest in that at this time.
Any problem?
No, sir, not at all. I would ask the Court, though, to consider, because this is on county property, that you may consider taking the funds from our non-departmental budget instead of the sheriff's budget, only because it's not, that's county property, and so that the sheriff doesn't have to utilize funding from his budget to, to pay for it, which we do have money in the non-departmental budget. Sheriff, if you, that's up to you, if you want to spend it from your budget. And then the only other thing is, which I'm sure you are, and I know Commissioner Perdola and I talked about this before on it, water well that he had, just making sure that we comply with any TCE requirements and all that kind of stuff, because I think there's some application fees and stuff that we have to pay for that as well.
Yes, and that's one of the things I've talked to them, is in the future, that I don't want to undersize it in order, in, in case we need more water in the future. That's why I was talking about needing to probably revamp the specs on that well, because it does, it would possibly supply water to that old piece of property if we need it.
And the county's going to pay for it, county property, when we do need water for the...
Collection facility.
Collection facility out there. Because they're, right now, they're driving that old truck all the way to Florisville to fill up with water, so.
Excess.
It becomes very valuable to have it right there next to the collection facility.
Yeah, so Judge, I would recommend if the Court wants to consider approval, not to exceed a certain dollar amount, and then if that, if it, if it's more than that, then the sheriff can come back with the updated proposal, but that way there's no delay in moving forward.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on Agenda Number Eleven, that the sheriff be allowed to put in his water well to not exceed fifty thousand dollars, and it should come from non-departmental budget.
Second.
I would just show them. I'll make the motion. All right, motion's made by the judge. All right. Is there any other discussion regarding Agenda Number Eleven?
Never had to write down Judge in my notes before. Motion by Judge, second by Judge.
All right, here are no other discussions. I'll call for the vote. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. All right, get to work.
You'll do.
All right.
Can I probably, I'm pointing to you, because I'm next.
You're next. Okay, Agenda Item Number Twelve. We have our county sheriff for, for our monthly report.
Of course, I don't usually give it the first one, so it's not prepared. But I will say that, given my own personal stuff, I will not probably be at this next commissioner's court meeting. So, one of my newly-trained public information officers is going to give the monthly report at the next commissioner's.
So, I want to tell you something. Whoever came up with the idea of having a Facebook to show your stats is excellent.
And that was, that was the two, that was the two of them that I sent.
I mean, keep it up, Sheriff. That's what you need to be doing. It's perfect.
And like I said, this is practice for them, so with the next commissioner's court meeting, they will be presenting our monthly stats.
That way everybody can see the stats, as soon as it's going on.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Ms. Dawn Delos, our Barnet County Tax Assessor Collector. She did not...
She, she did send one, Judge.
Okay.
I don't see it in our binder.
I don't see it in the binder.
Because she did send it.
Move to Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Ms. Janavie Montinas, our county clerk, discuss and take action on our commissioner's court minutes.
And they have been reviewed by the county judge and county attorney. You go, Judge.
And I, I ran myself, so.
How many emails?
I'll entertain a motion for Agenda Item Number Fourteen.
Make the motion that we accept the minutes presented by the clerk for the March tenth meeting and the March twenty-fourth meeting of the commissioner's court. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, second by Commissioner Perdola. Any other discussion regarding this Agenda Item? None, I'll call for the vote. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Removed Ms. Botterford, Human Resource Specialist, presentation of payroll personnel.
Good morning. Courtney Agular was hired as a patrol deputy for the sheriff's department, making twenty-five thirty-three per hour, fifty-five thousand, three twenty-six thirty-two annually, effective April sixth. Gilbert Elston was hired as a roanhand for precincts one, making twenty-one dollars per hour, forty-three thousand, six eighty annually, effective April fifteenth. Dwayne Mercer resigned from his position as an investigator for the county attorney's office, effective April fourth. Pendor Trevino was terminated from his position as a roanhand for precincts one, effective March twenty-seventh. Patrick Ramsey will be retiring from the sheriff's department on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with seventeen years of service. And Lucy Pena will be retiring from the custodial department on April eighteenth, with sixteen and a half years of service.
Questions in Ms. Moncrief? Thank you. Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Brenda Trevino, county auditor, discuss and take action on county bill.
Yes, so I have reviewed and approved bills totaling one million, four hundred and six thousand, sixty-one dollars and forty-six cents. The bulk of that is the one invoice that we're paying to Broadus Construction, almost completion of the new emergency operations center. And just for reference, the general fund dollar amount is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-three. Everything else is from other funds.
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to approve bills for one million, four hundred and six thousand, sixty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion regarding Agenda Item Number Sixteen? If none, I'll call for the vote. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against, ayes have it, motion passes. We will stand in recess until ten o'clock for... Time to nine forty-seven.